All right, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Monongate County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renetta McClure. Good morning, Renetta.
Morning.
Welcome back.
Welcome back from vacation.
Thanks. We have no exonerations to approve this morning. Minutes for July 28th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, $48,118.29. 911, $1,009.8588. Chestnut Ridge Park, $9,001.4283. Mason Dixon Park, $3,001.3010. Assessors valuation, $1,009.9222. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $1,009.5058. 911, $167.64. Home confinement, $7,007.2014. Chestnut Ridge Park, $6.2298. Assessors valuation, $5,005.29. For a voucher total of $80,359.66. We have state, uh, General County State Approval Budget Revisions for the prosecuting attorney, jail reimbursable, central garage, and dams and dredging. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. We also have fiduciary orders for August 4th, 2021, and itemized statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner George Armstead.
So moved.
Second.
We have first and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We also have, um, a separate fiduciary item, objections to the settlement filed in the estate of Devonte Rashawn Coles.
Moved.
Moved to refer to a fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, introduction to new employees and personnel changes. Jimmy Smith? Morning Jimmy.
Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, sir.
I didn't mention your title Jimmy, but obviously everybody knows Jimmy Smith, Director of our MECA 911.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce two new employees this morning. The first one is Courtney Silvestria. She began her duties Monday, August 2nd. And the second one will be Tia Lanza, who will begin her duties August 16th as telecommunicators.
Moved for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the county. Thanks Jimmy. Any other personnel changes? Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll now open up the comments from the public session of the meeting. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise their hand, come forward and provide his or her name and address for the record. Come on forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, first of all, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, and I also want to go ahead and thank Jim back there with the emergency, um, commission because he, uh, sorry, MECA 911, Ramon County, because he has been a huge help. Um, we just touched base this morning, um, and I spoke to, um, Tom Bloom yesterday as well.
I know you never, just for the record, would you tell us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Kaitlyn. My name's Kaitlyn, K-A-T-E-L-Y-N, Eichelberger. Um, I am one of the members of the Westover community who lost their homes last week due to the flooding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, but anyways, I just wanted to say that, um, I really do appreciate everything that the county is doing to help us. Um, there are several of us without homes, and I've just been made aware that there are possibly some people in the Westover, uh, not the Westover, the Evansdale community as well, where that dip is, where they just built that garage in the hospital. Um, I have not made connections with any of them, so I do not know the excess of their damage. But as early as this morning, I spoke to one of my neighbors because I stopped by my house just to check on things because, you know, it's a constant drying movement at the moment. And one of their floors had fallen in from where the carpet was so heavy from where the water hit. Um, 12 feet of water had entered my home. Um, that's eight feet in the basement roughly, four feet in my living space. Um, we have everything out, we have everything dry. The city of Westover showed up this morning to start taking things away, like trash-wise. But for the most part, many of us had already taken care of that. Um, and I just wanted to put on the record that I went to the city of Westover on Monday for our meeting, and my mayor had nothing to respond to us or even offer sympathy and just adjourned our meeting immediately because it's not a question and answer forum. Um, but anyhow, but I just want to thank you all for everything that everyone's doing. Right now, we are just trying to do everything we can to make sure we can get that, uh, MECA money from FEMA in order to help us make our homes livable again. Um, you know, I, it's like I've told the Dominion Post and several other news outlets, I'm okay with figuring out how to put floors down myself and putting in new kitchen cabinets on my own if I have to. But I, I just bought my house a year ago, um, and my furnace is gone. I put a brand-new furnace in the house, like a nice new computer. You know, my house is 100 years old, it was built in 1920, and it's beautiful, you know? Um, but my, my furnace is gone and, sorry, um, because of the city of Westover, which this makes complete sense to me, but, um, if there is X amount of damage in my wiring, the city of Westover requires me to get all-new wiring throughout the house because my house is 100 years old. I think it's over 70 or something is the ordinance, and I might be incorrect about those numbers, but I, my electrician did inform me that I'm probably looking at having to replace the wiring in my home. So I guess part of what I'm looking for as well is, you know, if we don't get this FEMA money, if we don't get, um, some of this aid, um, that we're looking to get to help make our homes livable again, I, I'm hoping that the city of Westover can come to a, um, you know, a meeting place with us at some of these ordinances that we have to do. For instance, like can I just replace just the bottom half of my house for wiring? Whatever, whatever we can do to make sure that we make the house livable again without exceeding, you know, looking at $50,000 worth of damages, um, and trying to reduce that as much as possible for what we, you know, can and can't fix and what they can help on. I do believe that the water is from the storm drain backup, and I do believe that sewage entered my home. Um, I have good cause to believe that. For one thing, my neighbor to the left of me, from, if you're looking out my backyard, heard the toilet gurgling first and foremost, and my toilet flooded up as well. Um, but anyhow, so I, I just wanted to make, I just want to put on the record that this is going on, and I do appreciate everyone who's helped me so far. Um, just from talking to Jim this morning, it's the most hope I felt since Thursday. Um, so any, any help that can also be provided, um, and I'm going to call a couple more people today. But I know that the governor is aware of our situation. I talked to his assistant yesterday. Um, I didn't, obviously I didn't get to get all the way to him, he's doing baby dog stuff. Um, and maybe baby dog will come and visit us at some point. But anyways, uh, I just wanted to make the county aware. Um, and if there's anything that I am not aware of to help remedy the situation or anything I can help do to make sure we can get funding to help, not just me, but my neighbors. I mean, I'm, I'm 29 years old, I have time. If I have to take a small business loan to cover the expenses and it works out that way, I'm young enough to where I can pay off that loan and be fine. Um, I already paid off my student loans, I can work hard and pay off this as well. But my neighbors, I'm the youngest person on my street, my neighbors can't even afford to retire. Um, they can't afford to lose their homes. So I'm, I'm really here representing them, more so than me, but me as well. Um, so if there's anything, any questions that I can answer for you all to help lead me in the right direction, I would be more than happy to. But thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Anybody else like to speak? Mike? This is public, public session.
Would you like me to speak, uh, at the, towards the end?
Um, why don't you talk under county officials section?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Mike. Hi ma'am.
Sure.
And as I addressed, uh, in the public session, you just need, just tell us your name and your address for the record, and how come, what would you like to say?
Well, my name is Ashley Moore, and I'm here on behalf of 8 Dunkard Avenue, which is my mom's residence. And she is 66, she was looking to retire, and she's not in a floodplain. Uh, the water that happened on July 29th actually went at least five houses deep in a non-floodplain area. Um, but her house is inhabitable to this point to our knowledge. We are ripping out walls. I've watched my mom throw away her life, everything she's worked for. I mean, it was paid off. She had no mortgage, she had no monthly rent. She didn't have any of that stuff. It's very heartbreaking. Um, I do understand that this damage is countywide, it's not just Westover. I've heard of Suncrest Homes, um, shi- homes behind Chateau Royal have also flooded. I mean, so people think it's an isolated incident, I mean, it's all over the county. I don't know, I just really feel for it. One of the truckloads we took to the dump was two tons. One of them, can you imagine throwing away two tons of your life? And beyond that? I, I just wish there was some assistance for things like this when this happens. This isn't the first time that Patterson has become a river. I mean, there's an issue here somewhere, and I think you guys are aware. I'm not saying anything that's not out there. But that's all I really had to say, I just wanted it out there. You're not alone if your basement flooded. Fill out the mecca 911.org, damage assessment. More people that do, that everyone can get help. That's all, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry.
Anybody else like to speak? Good morning ma'am.
I'm Diana Moore, I live on 8 Dunkard Avenue.
Okay.
And I feel like the only help that we've gotten so far is from the Red Cross. And the reason why I got help from them is because I was the 911 call. When it's, the water started coming in both sides of my house, I knew I was in trouble. I had, I mean, I called my son and he talked, I couldn't wait on them to come because it got mid-calf on my legs. And my son, who's in Maryland, I called him and he talked me through. The firefighters helped me get my car out. This was a matter, I don't know, 10, 20 minutes all this happened. It wasn't a real, you know, there's grass in my backyard, I checked it. I looked over to Kaitlyn's house and I couldn't even see. She has a brick wall around her, her patio, and you couldn't even see it. I mean, it was just a sea of water everywhere. And it, I mean, I feel like no help. Firefighters, yes, uh, Red Cross, but I thought, okay, I called 911. So no, if, if it was me and someone else already called, I wouldn't. But if people didn't call, they couldn't even get that $500 worth of help. The other help I've gotten, I took a collection at work, my brother gave me money yesterday. I have insurance, but not flood insurance. And my house may be totally lost. We don't know for sure yet, but the foundation might have moved on the other side, I got to get it checked. So, you know, I understand that floods can happen and things, but I'm like, there's got to be some kind of more response to the elected officials in Mon County, regardless of where you live. Whether it's the poor side of town or the, the better side of town, there needs to be more response. I mean, the elected officials in Westover act like they don't care. My mayor has gone across from my house several times and everyone stopped to look to see at this damage. And that's heartbreaking. So my thing is, I'm not the only one that needs help, a lot of people do. And at least I do have my daughters to live at now, but I'm in boxes and we're throwing away so much and the rest, I don't know what I'm going to recover from what we thought we could, you know, get back. But I think there needs to be something done to protect everybody from this, and it is a drainage issue, you know, both ends. And if money comes to Mon County, I think it also should go to Westover as well as the city of Morgantown. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So sorry.
Anybody else like to address the commission in public session? None, I'll go ahead and close the public session. Next item on the agenda is Colleen Coon Grants. Colleen, no grants? Next item on the agenda, Mon County Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency, request to move property owned by R.E.M. Engineering Services, P.L.L.C., described as District 8, MAP 53, Parcels 1 and 2, and property owned by Elizabeth Alexander, described as District 18, MAP 20A, Parcel 90.5 to the complaint stage. We have Tim Fitchett, our county letter control officer. Tim?
Members of the commission, on behalf of the Monongate County Committee for Abandoned and Dilapidated Properties, I would like to request that the property located at 3 Harley Drive, District 18, MAP 20A, Parcel 90.5, owned by Elizabeth S. Alexander, be moved to complaint. Additionally, I would like to request that the property located at 3537 Collins Ferry Road, District 8, MAP 53, Parcels 1 and 2, owned by R.E.M. Engineering Services, P.L.L.C., be moved to complaint. The allotted times on the notices of violation for both properties have expired, and the properties are not in compliance. Chronological documentation and pictures regarding these properties have been submitted.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, any discussion?
Just, I appreciate all the information is very clear here that you followed the law and given them ample opportunity to, to, to clean it up.
I appreciate it.
Great, I do appreciate all your efforts, and again, I see my name mentioned in, in one of the chronological, uh, chronological listings of the steps that you take. And this is, I live at the end of Collins Ferry, and I was contacted by the city because this property abuts 10 different houses, and it, it affects 10 different houses. Whether, you know, whether they're talking about, um, lack of a better word, critter harborage. Uh, there's chemicals in the garage that has completely destroyed. You can't even tell there's a garage there because it's so overgrown. Uh, the roof is blown off it, and, uh, it's open, so kids can, kids could, could wander into there, wander into who knows what. Uh, we did go there with members of the Health Department, and, uh, they had, likely had concerns. So I do appreciate all your work, uh, Tim, and I'm looking forward to seeing both of these properties addressed. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Uh, the first item I have is the, uh, your chief tax deputy sent me the 2021 sheriff's settlement. It will be on file here in the commission office if anybody wants to see it. We've got a press release issued by the Monongate County Homeland Security Emergency Management Agency and MECA 911 regarding the, uh, July 29th storm. Commissioner Bloom, uh, submitted a letter of support, um, for the abandoned mine lands and recre- reclamation Pilot Program Proposal Review Panel. That was signed while I was gone?
Yes, it's for rails and trail, uh, patterns that they have been working on. It was just a continuation.
Okay.
Requesting that they would continue the grants.
That's, that's all I have for correspondence.
I have one. Um, I received several, uh, letters and information from, in the, uh, Daybrook Fairview area. Basically, I, I said I would make it public and then see what we can do with the PSC. There's a Zito, Z-I-T-O broadband company from Pennsylvania that takes care of, of some of the individuals in that area, and the cable's been down since July 20th, and the entire community has been down for days. And they're not sending anyone out because they said, one, they don't have technicians, and two, they don't have enough residents for them to send a technician out. So then why are they serving? But they're still serving the people and, and charging them. So they are contacting, we're contacting PSC, but I said I would at least make it public of the information and the problems that are going on in that area, and that's it.
Can I get a copy of that whenever you?
Yes, okay.
Jeff, any? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, unfinished business, we have none. New business, to consider for adoption a declaration of state of emergency due to excess rainfall.
Moved for adoption.
Second.
Second, okay, do we want to have, Jimmy, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, why we need this.
Yes, Commissioners, last Thursday, July 29th, we experienced anywhere from four to six inches of range in the Monongate County area, um, which caused severe flooding and, and damage throughout our county. As of this morning, we've received 123 preliminary damage assessment reports, and those are just from individuals and businesses. Those do not count the damage assessment that we anticipate coming in, uh, from Morgantown, the Morgantown Utility Board, also from West Virginia University. Uh, we've been working closely with those individuals also. We believe there's at least 29 buildings that was affected on campus for the university, and also with the Department of Highways. As everybody has seen, the intersection of university and Patterson is still closed, and that's due to damage from the flooding. So, uh, I re- I am requesting that we do pass this.
Okay. What is the next steps after we pass this, as far as what, what is the anticipated? Who, then whose, whose court is the ball in then? Where does it go from there?
Once we pass the declaration, we will send a copy of that declaration down to the state. Um, we will also be submitting our first hundred, uh, reports for damage assessment down to the state today with the declaration. We have set a deadline of next Wednesday that we've asked all individuals to have those reports provided to our office.
Okay, so the municipalities and WU though also provide their reports by then? To after that?
Yes.
So you'll have a total summation of what the damages are?
Yes, we should by next Wednesday.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, no, but this maybe can open the door. Uh, Kaitlyn had contacted me numerous times, and I thought Morgantown Fairmont Housing Authority would be able to help, and I just wanted known that as she found out, they don't do rehabilitation anymore, and that's where I thought our money was going from the grant, I thought that was one of the avenues. So with this, this will really help open some doors. But I thought that was some area that we could help, and unfortunately, we could not. But we did try that. Yes.
Jeff, anything there?
No, do you want me to, do you want Jimmy to read this?
Yeah, if you go ahead and read the declaration.
Sorry.
It's a good thing I brought my class.
Uh, state of emergency declaration. On this, the fourth day of August, 2021, the Monongate County Commission, at the request of the Director of the Office of Emergency Management from Monongate County, has issued a county-wide state of emergency declaration for Monongate County. On July 29th, 2021, a severe weather event occurred in Monongate County consisting of large amounts of rain within a short period of time. Damage from water and lightning included, but is not limited to roadways, homes, businesses, and critical infrastructure. The large amount of rain caused homes to become flooded, and numerous roadways become impassable due to high water, water levels. Reports of trees falling and mud and rock slides were also reported in many areas. Any further information can be obtained from the Monongate County Office of Emergency Management at 304-599-6332. This state of emergency declaration shall remain in effect until lifted by action and authority of the Monongate County Commission dated August 4th, 2021.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, question passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration to approve funding requests by the Scotts Run Museum and Trail Incorporated and the Scotts Run Street Fair.
So moved, second.
Okay, um, just to be, to be clear, there's, these are $1,000 each. Uh, due to extenuating circumstances during COVID, they missed our regular fund grant, fund grant, grant process. Um, this is this, this, they've been funded as far as, as long as I can remember. Uh, so it was an, it was an honest mistake, so, um, that's why it's come before us now. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, I missed one item, um, in the employee personnel changes. Um, the sheriff's tax office has a individual that is moving from part-time to full-time employment, Kelly Zen. She will, uh, her, her salary as a full-time employee will be with benefits, salary's $30,000 a year.
Okay, um, that name sounds familiar, so she just came on part-time and now she's moved to full-time, or?
Um, I'm not exactly sure when she was employed as a part-time person, but she is currently working part-time and wa- and moving, well, she moved to full-time on August 4th.
Yeah, we just approved that a little while back, so it sounded familiar, so, okay, so to, uh, Mrs. Zen, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay. Okay, so reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors?
I'd like just to touch real quick on the COVID-19. Um, just a reminder to everybody that there is still testing going on in Monongate County for COVID-19. It is at the rec center Monday and Friday from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and that the Health Department is still giving free COVID shots by appointment every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And as we see the rise in our numbers, I just wanted to get that back out and make everybody aware.
All right, thank you Jimmy. Okay?
Good morning Commissioners.
Mike, you go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Sure, uh, I'm Mike Paul, I'm the Monongate County Flood Plane Coordinator, G.I.S. Administrator here. Um, I'm, my heart goes out to everybody that had problems with the flooding this past week, and I want to lend my services out there to the city of Westover and the other parts of the county that suffered from the flooding. Um, I'm sorry to say I did miss a call Friday from our state Flood Plane Coordinator from the Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management down there, and he's, uh, reached out to me directly. Have a call back out to him to see if there's any way that they can help from the capital standpoint down Charleston. Um, I spoke with Jimmy just briefly a minute ago and, uh, Mike Fortney and everything, uh, earlier, excuse me, uh, later last week, uh, about the flooding. We're going to try to do a different type of, uh, mapping and G.I.S. analysis of what the damage that, you know, occurred, so we can get a list of those properties and structures, so we can try to move forward in getting that money back in that you guys just approved to help these citizens out. So I just want to lend my help out there, and anybody who wants to contact us and, uh, feel free to contact me directly in my office, and we can determine if you're actually located in the, you know, 100-year floodplain boundary, and what kind of steps we need to take place or next in regards to possible flood insurance mitigation or anything like that. So I just wanted to let that be known.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information, Mike.
Appreciate it. Okay. Mayor Johnson, good morning.
Uh, Mayor Johnson, Westover. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that our people are working with Jimmy's people at MECA, and we're trying to keep updated on everything that's happening. So anything that, anything that happens, we'd like, you know, to be the first to know so we can help all the folks that have been devastated. We've had, we've had a lot of damage, not, not a, not a lot, but it seems like it was concentrated in one area that really caused a lot of damage. And, uh, we just want to make sure that, that we can get everything we can, any assistance that we can get, that we want to be on top of this, so. If there's anything that we can help with, even with the county, let us know. But, uh, I want to make sure that everybody knows that we're doing what we can, so.
Certainly, Mayor, and that anywhere where the county can help, certainly ask. Let, let us know where we can work together with, with our 911 people, with the state, uh, to see how we can address, address the people that have been affected by this, so, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Carrie, you're not here to speak, you're here for our next meeting? Okay, all right. Reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Yeah, just, I'm only give one. I'm really going to ask for people to get the word out that this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 is the Back to School Bash. Um, it is enormous what we are, we are doing. Um, we have almost 150 volunteers, we have the dental bus, we have, uh, the library's going to be there. We are handing out full backpacks with, uh, probably about $150 worth of school supplies in it, personal hygiene bags, then clothing, and then as you, and then we're also going to do, we're teaching, uh, those individuals that we're going to have cooking lessons and cooking of what the food we do give out, so that people can see how to make it. We're giving out recipes, and then we're giving about, uh, 50 to 100 pounds of food per those families if they're interested.
of food per those families if they're interested in it. And again, this is from 10 to 1. It's at the Old Mountaineer Mall and also we're giving out books. So every family and child will at least get five or more books. So we're trying to do a lot to get the students ready and be prepared for school. The only thing I can say is, you know, yes, the phones start ringing for the county commissioners that night till about midnight. We were trying to find out what we could do and unfortunately you're limited. But I will, I will say this since the newspaper said it. We were contacted by MUB and in general, since this was an executive session, all I can say is that they came up with a proposal for the one area from Shorty Anderson's down through to Patterson Drive. It's over $2 million and I know the three of us verbally said, we want to help. And there's a commitment there verbally to consider ARC funds for it. And that's about all I'm allowed to say. But again, and I am sorry, we, we will, we've never had this before and we're going to try and see what we can do to help the individuals. Okay?
Thank you, Tom. Jeff?
Just a couple notes on the rails trails. Mile mark 18.5 at Little Falls to mile 24 at Opakiska is going to be closed for the next week or so while it's, stone's put down and it's compacted. So avoid that area if you're a user of the trail as well as between mile seven and eight, the, over by the core arboretum and Star City Water Treatment Plant. It's, there were two or three major washouts that are being repaired now. So just watch out for the crews. It's not closed there, but there will be some major work going on this week. And again, I echo Tom and I'm sure Sean Sentiment said, we're going to do everything we can to help you within our, within our power and ability. But we, we wish you luck and I'm very sorry for what's happened.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, my schedule, last Thursday, I had a health department meeting. I got my Thursdays mixed up. And then after that, I didn't make the jail bill meeting. Tom and Jeff participated in that. And then I had a meeting with Tim to take a look at that dilapidated house. And then I had a meeting out the extension building with our new venue manager and an entity that's interesting and exploring options regarding the use of the kitchen. And then after that, I had a meeting with the Mon County Fair, Fair Rob Maxwell. Friday, we had staff reports. This Tuesday, I had a site visit with Bridge Road Development, a bunch of citizens out there that wanted the commission to take a look at something, the roads out there. Today is a regular day though. We had, did have our meeting this morning with Green County. They obviously weren't even aware of our flooding since we asked them, said, how'd you guys did? So it really did seem like an isolated incident that this time really affected the Suncrest area and the Westover area. The, tomorrow I have my broadband survey team meeting, MAP Executive Committee meeting, and then a lunch meeting with Dr. Smith. And then Friday, we have staff reports and then we have our full broadband initiative. I did want to note that our broadband meeting with the municipalities will be on the 11th at 6:30. That will be here in chambers and there'll be a virtual option for our, for our consultants and anybody that needs that, that accommodation. So that's 6:30 on the 11th and I haven't sent out the invites yet, but we'll be sending those out to the individuals. Lastly, there's, I, you know, it's really hard to address issues like this when we're, we're powerless to help. But I can certainly attest that we will do everything possible to put the right people in touch with you that, that do have power to, whether it's funding or assistance or whatever, to help. The citizens in Mon County are extremely, is the, one of the most generous populations I've ever encountered as far as when there's an issue, people jumping in and helping. It's, we can't tell you that you can ever put a price on anything that was in your house. Even if we could replace your house tomorrow, we can't replace the memories. We can't replace the pictures. We can't replace things that you lost. So we do, we, you know, we understand that. It really was an isolated, it to certain areas in Westover and certain areas in the Evansdale area. And it's happened twice in six weeks. So we're not really sure why that's happening. So there's a larger discussion that we need to have as far as why and how we can prevent it from happening again. Yesterday, there was a warning about hail damage and thunderstorm. Now every time we have a warning, you know, do we need to be concerned? So it does, it's going to require a conversation with the county, the cities, the municipalities, MUB, everyone to figure out why this is happening and how we can keep it from happening again. But again, that doesn't solve your immediate problem. But I can attest that Jimmy will make sure that he gets the, the information down to the state. We'll put pressure on people from the state to address it and give us an answer. And we'll also keep exploring other ways that we can help you. So again, I, you know, it's, it's, that's the toughest part of this job is listening to, you know, where people are affected and you can't help. We can always help some even if it's by the communication or again, just getting the right parties in a room. So thank you for coming and talking to us and hopefully we'll, we'll have a lot more conversations regarding this. So thank you very much.
Move to a joint?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.